So, thank you everyone. Welcome to tonight's school committee meeting. Today is Thursday, February fifteenth, and the meeting is being broadcast by Milford TV. If anyone would like a copy of the broadcast, please feel free to reach out to a member of the school committee or the administration. Before we begin tonight, we'd like to hold a moment of silence in remembrance of those lost and injured in the Florida school shooting. Thank you. Our thoughts certainly with the victims and their families. So our first order of business is the approval of minutes. So I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January eleventh, two thousand and eighteen regular session. I believe all were present for that meeting. Motion from Scott, seconded by John, all in favor. We also have the minutes of the January eleventh, two thousand and eight executive session. All were present but Scott. So I have a motion, motion from Jim, seconded by Mike, all those in favor. And then we also have minutes of the February first, two thousand and eighteen regular session. I was not present, nor was Joe and Scott, so I have a motion to approve those minutes. Motion from John, seconded by Jim. So, three abstentions and four in favor.
Just point of order for the last vote, just for the record. It was six in favor of one abstention for the last vote.
Oh, right. And announcement, next order of business is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Do we have any announcements or correspondence? No announcements today?
No. So, a couple of things. One, just wanted to congratulate the entire music department, led obviously by Nadine Palmeroy. They had another successful vertical concert last week here at the high school. And it really is, and it, there's small alterations each year, but for anyone that's not had an opportunity to go through and see it, what you see is actually the, I want to make sure I get this right, the sixth grade band, the seventh grade band, the eighth grade band, and then the high school band plays. And you really can see the development, and it's really even just when the sixth grade band plays, and they do a great job. And then when the seventh plays, you go, wow, there's a really, there's a marked difference just in that one year. And then that difference from seventh to eighth. And then once you get to the high school, it's, it sounds like it's a concert hall. It's amazing. And then hearing all this, all the teachers, I'm sorry, all the students playing together, really is just amazing. So it's, you know, we continue to have such a talented group of musicians as we have for many, many years. So certainly want to congratulate Nadine and all of the staff on a successful vertical concert.
Thanks, Scott. Any other announcements or updates? Nope, and you, you're good, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Next order of business is invitation to speak. Do we have anyone here who'd like to address the board? Nope, not today. We're flying through this today. Yeah, next order of business is the Milford Public Schools Policy Review. We do have policy file, ACF, the nondiscrimination on the basis of disability policy.
Yes, so we met on this a couple of weeks ago, and essentially what we have in front of us is a first read of a policy that is already in place, that is essentially just updated to match the current, anything that's been amended legally, to ensure that there is no discrimination taking place in the Milford Public School towards students, staff, et cetera. So, even though it's a first read, and we don't generally vote on a first read, we may want to entertain that tonight, as it's, it's nothing new.
Okay.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, so Jen, what you're saying is you've made no revisions to the policy at all?
We didn't make any changes.
So this is one of the poli, so there are certain policies within our policy guide that have to be updated every year, and on a timetable. This is one of the ones that's, it's just up for renewal. We did have Jerry review it. We did review it with town council. We did review it as a committee as well. There were no proposed changes to the policy, but it does need to be updated, and we voted on.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we vote and accept this policy into the handle.
Okay. Now, before, before we get to the motion, this doesn't really impact the motion, but one question I did have on the policy, if we could just, it may be one of your early answers, or if not, we can just follow up, but it does talk about website accessibility for people with handicaps, so do you know what special accommodations we make there on the website?
So, we actually asked, it's funny that you brought that up, we actually asked as well. We have worked with our IT department to ensure that it is, it is accessible and not, and not, and is in compliance with ADA, and it requires with regards to font, ability to enlarge, it's, there's a number of different factors, and we actually did confirm that we are, we are in compliance with that with our website.
Okay, great. Okay.
The font size is, is part of it.
Okay. So with that said, we do have a motion from Mike. Is there a second? Second from Jim, all in favor. So the policy is unanimously approved. And next we have the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to update the committee on a couple of different things. First, I wanted to update the committee on the recent reducing anxiety in children seminar that was held on February eighth. That was sponsored by the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, or the CPAC. That was held at the Stacy Middle School Auditorium, and just under two hundred people attended the event. The presenter, Jessica Minahan, is a well-known presenter on the subject of behavior theory and childhood anxiety. During the two-hour presentation, Jessica was able to help the audience understand what anxiety in the classroom or home looks like. She offered advice for any adult working with children, and she explained how to help students understand, help parents understand what anxiety looks like in students, and how they can help students with the skills. I thought the message was timely, as we continue to discuss social-emotional learning and make it a focal point for, in our strategic plan. Some of the eye-opening statistics that Jessica shared with us, the rate of students with autism is about one in sixty-eight kids. But I think more eye-opening is the rate of students who have clinically significant anxiety in our classrooms, which is about one in four. And then in pre-K, it's about one in three. To me, these statistics speak to why social-emotional learning is so vital in our schools. More and more students are not having their basic needs met, or don't have the coping skills to deal with the classroom environment. In describing the typical classroom, Jessica illustrated the fact that there are more students with anxiety, autisms, and other disabilities in our mainstream classrooms than typical students, which I, you know, it's eye-opening to think of that. In speaking with other staff members who attended the seminar, we felt that all staff should have the opportunity to see Jessica present. I was able to talk to her afterwards, after everyone had left, and explain, and she explained to me the kind of work that she does with other districts. She works directly with school counselors and support staff to help them look for the behave, to help them look at the behaviors they're observing in classrooms, and developing plans and procedures for the teaching staff. I think this is another example of the kind of embedded professional development we're looking to offer in our district. We're currently working with her to make this happen, and hopefully we can make it happen this year. Overall, I think the night was a huge success. I think that the Milford CPAC and Lucy Jenkins are doing great things for our district in the area of social-emotional learning. But we need to keep the momentum going and continue to explore programs like this to help our community become better equipped, to help all of our students. I don't know if anybody, I know there were some other members that were at the, the event, and I don't know if anybody else had any comments about that.
Yeah, I, I, I thought it was, I loved it. I mean, I, I would have had no idea that kind of a situation for a teacher with kids with anxiety. I would have never even thought about it, in, in the facts and the stats, you know, one to three. And she put on a great job, too. I mean, it really puts you in perspective of what's happening in that classroom.
Yeah, she did a good job, not just addressing the teachers in the room, but the families and the parents in the room as well, and providing them with some skills to use at, at home, so.
Right.
And it was well-attended, like almost two hundred people.
Right, right.
So it was a good turnout.
Yeah, and I'm glad to hear that you engaged, too, to come in and receive additional professional development.
And, and she's great. She's, she's easy to talk to, and I think that our counselors and our, our support staff would get a lot out of her.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know, any, any other questions or comments?
I just, I, I think it's, I think it's great that, you know, obviously in the wake of what we've, of what happened yesterday in Florida, clearly there's a spotlight on mental health, obviously with the SEL program, and continuing working with Jessica Minahan, presentations like that, continued professional development, you know, just even thinking about our budget process and, and the expansion that we're having within our own district, adding additional mental health professionals to be able to give additional support to teachers, and certainly to students that are needing it. You know, the, it's, the time is certainly now, and it's certainly very, very critical. So I'm, I'm pleased at the presentation one as well. Though two hundred people is certainly fantastic, I would certainly encourage all parents to continue to do some research and reach out. You know, two hundred parent, two hundred people attending, which is great. I know there were members of this committee that were there, there were parents, there were teachers. But we have forty-two hundred students. So even if it's one parent per, two hundred is a great showing. I certainly don't want to underestimate that. We have a long way to go. And certainly being able to get that, that message out. If it was, if it was videoed, is it possible? I don't know for copyrights or anything like that with Jessica, but if it's something that we could attach to our website, even just some bullet points or some speaking points, certainly now, you know, mental health has obviously been squarely in the headlines for a number of years, and obviously events such as last night, not to, not to make light of it, but to really just as a reinforcement of, of how much work there really is left to do.
Yeah, and, and to Scott's point, I know with the Jessica presentation, we probably couldn't videotape it, but that's something we should consider doing more often moving forward anytime we have any types of events like that, because many people can't, don't have the opportunity to attend. So, if we, if we can record them and post them on the website, I think that would be very beneficial. But even regular updates, like the MCAS update that we did a couple weeks ago where we had, you know, very few people attend, that's a thing we could easily, you or Kevin would sit down, record, and put out there. So I think we can do a better job of, of that. Mike?
I think what's important, too, is that Chief Olafman talks about all the time now, is that there used to be a time where you would be dealing with somebody, and in the old days, they'd walk away from you, and they'd, you'd say to your, whoever's with you, you'd say, boy, that person's off their rocker. You can't do that anymore. You need to call the authorities and say, so-and-so was just here, they're leaving, they're driving, they're walking, they're going down Route sixteen, and let, let the police, let the authorities make the decision. To Scott's point, what happened yesterday, what happened over the weekend, if you look into both those cases, both those unfortunate people had some mental, mental health issues. And I think it's key that we as a district need to work the best we can, and we're doing a great job with it, but with parents. And when we spot a child in our district that's, that's having some emotional issues, we need to make sure that they're, they're getting the services that they need. Because we've talked about it for a long time, sometimes they just don't get the services they need. And we need to make sure as a committee and as a district that those children, and our employees, I'll go as far as to say our employees get the services that they need. Because mental illness is an illness, just like any other illness. Unfortunately, Lucy Jenkins and I had a conversation one night, and she said that the hard thing about mental illness is, it's the brain, you know, and that makes it very, very difficult. So, I want us to keep working towards that.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I think that was a good point, Scott, about getting access to more people, although I agree two hundred is a lot, considering what we usually see at school events. Jessica Minahan has a great blog and website, so maybe if Kevin gives an update, or principals include the, the link to that, that way people who weren't able to make it could at least access her resources on their own.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Craig? Want to give the NESDAQ update?
Yep. The NESDAQ group is in their final phase of the School Facilities Best Educational Use Study. Over the next month, they'll be sending us a copy of their report. The report will consist of several things. It'll consist of an updated demographic analysis, enrollment projections, a capacity analysis of our buildings, and any deficiencies they've noted. They'll also offer any recommendations to remediating any of the noted deficiencies. Once we get the report, we'll be meeting with them, central office will be meeting with them, to ensure that all the factual information is accurate, and then we'll discuss plans for a school committee presentation. We'll most likely be looking at April or May for that presentation to school committee. Throughout the course of the study, the group worked directly with central office, building administrators, Rob Quinn, and several town offices as well, like the planning board. A major component of this report will be the differences between the current occupying capacity compared to the planned occupying capacity. The differences are, the current occupying capacity is how we're currently using spaces to deliver educational programming at each school. And then the planned occupying capacity looks at the current programming and determines what the appropriate spaces are for each. This could prove to be significant if we're running programs right now in spaces that they weren't designed to be running. So we're looking forward to that report and bringing it to the school committee, and once we bring it to school committee, we look forward to taking the report and analyzing it with our long-range ed pla, ed committee. So, basically that's all I have for, for an update on that until it goes further.
Okay. Any questions on NESDAQ?
No, not this time.
Great, see some progress there. That's awesome.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing, hearing about that.
All right. Thank you, Craig.
You're welcome.
Kathy, I believe you're up next.
I have for the committee this evening, the FY18 budget update. And in addition to that, we have a budget transfer request, which we spoke about at our last budget meeting. But for those of you that were not at that budget meeting, let me explain. We have four areas that we have to consider with budget transfers, two of which involve substitute teaching. One is due to the fact that for the first time, I believe it's twenty-five to thirty years, the DESE has added a chart of account category for long-term substituting. Not that I'm completely familiar with the reason why they've gone to a long-term substitute category. I believe it's for them to be able to track certified staff in the role of long-term teaching, so that the DESE can identify those numbers that are associated, or cost, I should say, with that chart of account number. So therefore, not knowing what we have in the beginning of the school year for long-term subs, it would, I think it would be best to do a mid-year and then an end-of-year for the long-term staff that are coming in and serving in those roles. That amount of money, and so essentially we're just addressing the line item that we currently have budgeted, and I'm requesting to move it to long-term sub for the areas that have had long-term roles, such as reading intervention at the Stacy School. We had a esteemed teacher retire end of October, and all of those roles are filled with long-term subs. That is in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand. In addition to that, we have just a substitute allocation that we need to address from our regular-built salary instruction line for deficits that we currently have. We also are, or I am also requesting a hun, almost a hundred thousand dollars to offset our FY19 non-recurring cost items. Some of the items that the principals requested were such items as replacing cafeteria tables at Stacy. We have an annual, or I should say, a uniform rotation request from the athletic director in the amount of twenty-six thousand. We also have guided reading books to be replaced at Memorial. And we have an S.T. Ma, I'm sorry. We also have a second step curriculum program that we're looking to fund. That totals the, in the amount of ninety-six thousand two hundred. In addition to that, with FY19 in mind, we are looking at reducing some expected expenses in FY19 with funds that will be available to us at the end of FY18 to offset our FY19 budget, almost in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. So essentially what we're requesting is that any pallets of paper that we could do at the end of the school year, there are some technology tech board projects that we had funded in our FY19. We're looking to fund those out of FY18 to offset our FY19 budget, again, in the amount of a hundred thousand eight hundred dollars. With this request total in the amount of five hundred and ten thousand, it brings our FY18 budget into, it reduces our deficit in the long-term sub-line. In addition, it will offset our FY19 budget by almost two hundred thousand. It does require a vote for a transfer in the amount of five hundred and ten thousand five hundred dollars.
Any questions?
Quick question, yeah. So just, so, obviously being there for the budget meetings and everything like that, but just, that's a lot of information to just, just digest. What we're effectively doing, Kath, Kathy, is just, we're, we're basically prepaying some of our expenses, and most of you guys know about this, but just for those maybe watching at home, we're effectively prepaying some of our expenses that, for non-perishable items such as paper. We're buying them with leftover money from this year's budget, so that it comes off of what our request is for next year's budget. That, that's really what we're doing. We're just paying it in advance, such as the paper pallets, things of that nature. We're buying them now, because we have the extra money, the, you know, with, with some surplus and some adjustments we were able to do in this year's budget. So it's a lower request going into next year's, going into next year's budget season. And it's effectively, right, Kathy?
Yes, that's correct.
Kathy, on the, on the transfer-
Yes.
-from salaries or whatever the substitute lines, that's, that's a change in the accounting practice moving forward. So it's not just for this year. Going forward, we're going to be allocating the substitute line items separately than we were.
I would call it back funding, because we have no way of knowing what we're going to anticipate for a long-term sub. So essentially, it's just almost a housekeeping. You budget for the salary under instruction appropriately, and then if they're out of district long-term, then we move their salary over to cover the expense under long-term substitute.
Okay. Okay.
And it is built as a chart of account item in our monthly financial statement. So that just stays as a function of the DESE coding structure.
Okay. Any other questions for Kathy on the budget transfer? Do we have a motion? Motion from Scott, seconded by John, all in favor. And Kathy, I did have just one quick question. You may have covered this in the past. On, on the budget balance report, I think it's page thirteen, where it talks about the collaborative tuition?
Yes.
There's a pretty large deficit there?
That's essentially, that'll get worked out between Circuit Breaker and what we have funded for our out-of-district lines.
Okay.
Oh, and, uh, let's see. We, the school committee also has a personnel update from our previous meeting. I, I have to pass over on the approval of warrants. It's a policy-driven that our superintendent approved them, and he did not do that before he left for Tennessee. So, we'll bring all of them to the next meeting. Don't mess with Jonah, he's going to be ugly.
You're going to be cranky, aren't you?
I might break the record.
I better bring a new pen, huh?
This isn't going to impact our ability to pay our bills and anything like that.
No.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Question for you then, what would happen if he becomes ill?
I guess the school committee would have to take that up under their policy.
Drive to his house?
Well, no, I'm just thinking that, no, but if he's ill, I mean, God, God forbid, hopefully not, God would, it never happens. But if our policy states that the only one that's allowed to sign it is the superintendent of schools, we haven't created any oversight or any contingency planning that says if he's ill, if he's incapacitated, it, from an illness perspective, I mean, I, we were talking about just before the meeting, Milford Hospital massively expanded their emergency room. They're an average of waiting, they have, they have an average number of people, fourteen people waiting for beds right now because of the flu epidemic that's going on right now. Joe, I'm sending you to go get it signed, you're sending it to the cells.
I got the flu already.
I just, we should, I think we really ought to look at possibly making adjustments to that policy, so that we can allow for the assistant superintendent to be able to sign for it, or designate. I just, there's no reason why we shouldn't have that one. We're done with it.
Yeah, that's a valid point. My nine years of being here, I never knew that. I never knew that the superintendent, sort of Scott's point, that's something that definitely needs to be, I mean, the assistant superintendent is, you know, the backup person. I mean, you know, he or she should have the same authority, you know, if something should happen to the superintendent, because we don't know what could happen tomorrow, you know? But you can't stop doing business.
We may want to look further into this, but I think the superintendent has that, that charge, because this, this committee gives that to him. So in his, in his absence, if there were one, I, I think that we would have approval of the spending.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We need to review the policy and what our-
If somebody.
-what our requires. But somebody needs to be able to sign for that if it's not him.
We give him those powers, because it, I mean, we meet once every two weeks.
We're delegating them to him.
He's here every day. But if anything were to happen to him, I believe those, you know, it's ultimately our-
They may flow over to us, but I, I think we-
I think it does. But we should look to some clarification.
We need to look at the clarification.
So, can you just add it to the-
Yeah, we'll add it to the policy subcommittee.
Yep.
All right. We have some gifts, too, right, Kathy? Or did you have other updates before we get to the gifts?
Yes. I'm sorry?
Do you have other updates before we get to the gifts?
No, I do not.
Yeah, all right. So we do have quite a few gifts, from some very generous donors. So the first is from the Waters Corporation for the Science Olympiad, in the amount of a thousand dollars. Do I have a motion to accept? Motion from Jen, seconded by Joe, all in favor. Next gift is from the J. Lim Foundation. It's for the Math and Science Award, in the amount of three thousand dollars. Do I have a motion to accept? Motion from Mike, seconded by Jim, all in favor. Then we have a gift from Brian Murray in memory of Susan Dulac. It's for high school special education, in the amount of fifty dollars. Do I have a motion to accept the gift? Motion from Jim, seconded by Joe, all those in favor. We also have, and Kathy, I don't know if this is a duplicate, or if it's two different donations, but we have two gifts here in the amount of five hundred dollars for, from Alliance Energy for-
Those are two separate gifts.
-Math and Science, so they have two separate gifts, okay. So we have two gifts, five hundred dollars each, for Milford High's math and science program from Alliance Energy ExxonMobil. We have a motion to accept the two gifts. Motion from Scott, seconded by John, all in favor. And we also have a gift from Christine Heckendorf for the, for contracted services and supplies. The total amount of the gift is a hundred dollars, so I have a motion to accept. Motion from Mike, seconded by Joe, all in favor. And that is for the family network. And then we also have a gift for the family network from Lacy and Malcolm Beaton, in the amount of a hundred dollars. So I have a motion, motion from Jen, seconded by Jim, all in favor. And then we have another gift for the family network, in the amount of twenty-five dollars from Ryan and Allison Sullivan. Do I have a motion? Motion from John, seconded by Scott, all those in favor. And so some very generous gifts. Really appreciate all of the, the donations. All right. And next we have subcommittee updates. We did have a marketing subcommittee meeting. Jim, do you want to give an update on that?
Yeah, sure. We covered step-up days and tours, social media brainstorming, I love Milford Public Schools video, and personal reaches. So the highlights from that are the video is actually in conception stage. There are some gates that continue to push out its development, but it's still very much on the horizon. From social media brainstorming and personal outreach, is we're looking for ways to continue to increase the visibility of the district. We are looking into some more traditional marketing approaches, like direct mail, et cetera. So we're looking at, the last conversation was to develop some type of outbound messaging, where it'd be a, you know, some type of a hard piece of collateral that we can have very targeted messaging on, that we can distribute either through the crier, if we have a future conversation, or we would distribute individually, based on budget accessibility. So a couple of things on the docket that we're working on, working on moving forward. From a social media perspective, it's just very difficult to identify, you know, who is actually seeing the outbound messaging, and whether or not we're seeing results. We think that a direct hard, direct marketing approach is, is a more beneficial route.
Thanks, Jim. And I just handed out some material that I think you might find, might find useful. It really helps validate some of the work that's being done by the, the marketing committee. So there's a, a guide for public schools, a marketing guide for public schools, and there's an article that came out today on the importance of, of customer service. So I just wanted to share that information with you, because again, it helps validate a lot of the work that we're doing around marketing Milford Public Schools, and around trying to turn around some of the school choice numbers. And just to summarize the guide at, at a high level, it's really focused on, on three things that every school district should be focused on. The first is providing exceptional service, so treating parents and students with respect and responding to their needs. The second- The second is telling our story effectively, and make sure the families know why our schools are the best choice for, for their children. And then the third is listening to your customers, making sure that, um, you have the solutions that, that meet their needs. So, um, you know, I thought it'd be informative for, for you to have. Uh, the article that came out today, you probably got in your email as well, which talks about the importance of, uh, customer service. So, you know, we're going to get, continue to focus on, on the marketing moving forward. Um, but any, any feedback or input that the rest of the committee would have is something we'll. All right. And there were no other subcommittee meetings, I don't believe, right? So the next agenda item is future agenda items. Does anyone have any future agenda items?
If I may. Um, so I actually had a parent reach out today, um, again, unfortunately referring back to the, the tragedy in Florida. Um, and just asked really what it is that Milford Public Schools do. Um, I, I think it would be valuable to probably review some of the measures that we, um, have taken. Um, for those that are watching at home, just a, a very brief overview here. Um, some of the security measures, we've done active shooter training that we actually do fairly regular, regularly here in Milford Public Schools. Um, we actually have, uh, every building is now locked. You cannot get into the building without an appointment. We have dual entrances, double-door entrances. Um, we've limited access to the buildings to one door during the day, uh, one main door during the day. You've got to be buzzed in. There's a number of different things that we've done. We're increasing, as we talked about, additional spending. But I, I do think as a future agenda item, if we could elaborate on the, sort of the measures that we've taken. A lot of these were done in the wake of unfortunately another school shooting in Newtown, Connecticut. Um, but I think it's time that we, I think it might make, make sense for us to continue to review that, share it with the public, and, as well as, um, you know, see if there's any additional measures that we may be able to take. Uh, we may even want to invite, uh, Chief Aloffman or members of our, um, our school resource officer in as well.
Yeah. And I, I think they make sense. It's important to revisit that every once in a while, um, just to, you know, socialize after the community. Uh, and, and to your earlier point, um, it goes beyond just locking down the building, right?
Yes.
A lot of it has to do with some of the social and emotional, uh, work that we're doing throughout the, the district. Um, so we could certainly talk a lot about that as well. And there are a number of important initiatives as part of this budget process that we're, we're focused on as well. So, um, yeah, I think we, we had that.
Definitely. And as far as emergency trainings go, uh, the high school recently just had one that involved all students. And then prior to that, they had one with staff.
Mm-hmm.
Um, additionally, there's one coming up at, uh, at Stacy Middle School too. I'm not sure if it's going to involve students at this point, but definitely members of the police are coming to speak to, to staff, so.
And I, and I know obviously that we partner very, we partner very closely with Milford Police Department. Um, they're phenomenal advocates in support, in support of us. Um, and certainly, you know, their priority is obviously keeping everyone safe. Um, obviously our students and staff included within that. So, um, yeah, I think if we can, if we can spend some time on that at a, at a future meeting, uh, hopefully ideally in March would be great. But I'm sure March is filling up quickly. Um, but I would appreciate that. I think the time is of the essence on that. That's all I had.
I think, Mr. Chairman, what's important is, uh, for the general public to know how serious that we do take security in the Milford Public Schools. An example was two years ago with the Special Olympics Games. I forget who the Patriots player was, a former Patriot showed up to.
It was Matt Light?
Give the awards away.
Oh, it was Joe Andrews, sorry.
And they forgot to put his name on the list. So he gets into the, I call it the holding tank. There must be a better word than that. But, uh, he said, I'm here to give the awards away for Special Olympics. And the woman looked and said, jeez, I'm sorry, I don't have your name on the list. And he said, well, I'm a former Patriots player and I'm here to give away. And she said, I'm really sorry. She said, I, I just can't let you in the school. He said, well, I'm here to give the awards away. And she said, I'm really sorry you're not on the list. And the bottom line of it is they finally called down to the field and, um, I just drew a blank on her name. Oh, uh, Jen came up and she apologized to him. And he said, please don't apologize to me. He said, this is amazing. He said, this woman could have said, as soon as I said, geez, I'm a former Patriot or whatever, could have hit the button. I could have been in that school. And so he said, security is, you know, very tight. It can never be too tight. Um, you know, one thing that I, I worry about is that, um, and I know this is new business, but it's kind of jumping on to Scott's point, is that once school is in session, everything is locked down. What I worry about is before and after. So I've been here at meetings in the afternoon and I don't have to have my badge on because the school is open. And I always am very concerned, and I don't know how you address it, because you have to allow kids to be kids. You have to allow school to be school. But how do you, how do you, how do you monitor the movement that's going on when the school is now allowed to be open? All schools, you know, the buses are coming, the kids are coming, or the kids are going, the teachers are coming, the teachers are going. And you don't want to make it too, too tight. But I think that's another thing we need to look at is, are we monitoring that activity as well best that we can? Best that we can. And not that you want to, as I said, school's got to be school. It's, you know, it's, it's, think about it. When you get to high school, it's some of the greatest years of your life. And you don't want to live in, you know, we talked about it earlier tonight, anxiety. You know, you don't want to, you don't want to make everybody so anxiic that they're not enjoying themselves, so. But I think it's something to keep in the back of our mind with what's going on.
I, I think to that point, Mike, I think it also goes to, yes, it's about the staff, it's about the training, it's about all of those things. I, I think part of that too is, is I, I think, um, it's also how we talk with our students. It's also how, you know, how we work with our students and how we encourage them and create an environment for them to speak up. And that it's not just Johnny being Johnny. You know, that, that's, that's a critical measure. It's, it's not the, well, we can't say anything about that because, no, I'm not saying you go talk to the kid. I'm saying we need to create an environment. And I know so many of our teachers have such great relationships with our students. But I think we need to, to continue to reinforce creating that environment and crea- and, and making sure that our students know not only that it's okay for them to come and report when they've got, hey, you know, something's not right today. I, I see something that doesn't make sense to me. And we say the, you know, we hear a lot of the, if you see something, say something. I think we need to go further than that and do a much better job of very clearly defining that for our students and continuing to reinforce that. Not just in the wake of tragedies like Newtown and what we've seen this week, but what, on an ongoing basis, how do we can create that environment in our schools so our students feel comfortable? And that there's not going to be repercussions for them saying, you know what, there's something that's just not right with Sally today. Or I saw something on their book that made me, that, you know what, it, I wasn't uncomfortable, but there was something just off about it. They're drawing pictures of guns, they're drawing this, they're drawing that. There's going to be stuff out there, but it's up to our teachers to then filter that out and our administrators. But we've got to create that environment. And I do think that that's, as we go through with this and, and we continue to look at how we're going to continue to support it, I would ask that that be part of that conversation as well and we look to the administration to help cre- help, help under, help us to understand of what we can do to be supportive as this, as a governing body of the school system for that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And questions like that or why there should be a future agenda item?
Agreed.
Any other future agenda items? Just have, have wanted to follow up to some of the conversations last night. If we can get a report on class sizes at one of our future meetings, that'd be great.
Not the average now.
Not the average, right. We want very specific class size numbers. Um, so that, that'd be good. Um, any old business? No business. All right. We do have an executive session tonight, um, to discuss the MTA contract negotiations and will not be returning to regular session. It does require a roll call vote. We'll start over on this side. John?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. So we have six yes, one no or abstention.
Abstention.
Um, do we have a motion for adjournment? Motion from Joe, seconded by Jim. All in favor? Thank you, everyone.